Thanks.
A lot of us, a lot of us, I don't know if most people are, we just looked at all these over here and sat on them, and said, "Hey, I'm going to break you open," so.
I guess because sometimes there were some safety or something.
Some safety orders that they're using to find property and then destructive, but.
Hopefully, as a problem example, there's, there are always children of that, like, not actually.
And you see, like, an extremely soccer-walking around that will try out like, you know, it is a convenient, it is a convenient behavior.
If you have a, they will release the visitor, so it's taken care of.
In most cases, the principals are good about giving a warning. However, if there's, you know, a lack of people around, you better really turn up and work out in charge of the first case.
If you kind of destruction or, or beating or any of those kinds of.
Hey, we're not popping a third one, we're not going to be interested.
You have a different policy to talk about following the rest of the procedure. We have a separate policy related to the benefit of the problems, and there is a request to improve the situation.
Oh, you were a slum shot at.
Slum shot, you know what a slum shot is? It's meant to be a slum shot.
No.
Yeah, slum shot is the, is the two things between the, the, the line, and slum shot is the one where you put the wall in, like, the wall in, that, where you swing it around, that's a slum shot.
You knew that? I thought it was one past tense.
I had to look it up, I had to look it up to go through the slum shot.
Mine was dark, so.
That's right.
Yeah, we're very, very, we're, we're, our, our non-literacy. Perpetual behavior is, here is our sixteen reportable offenses. So, anytime that a student makes sixteen offenses occur, there is a report paid, and we're going to report it, and we're going to, we're going to. But I did reduce the number of cases, I did increase the severity, that it's a part of the manual reporting, but it was about sixteen, however. You do report as a weapon, all of the pocket knives, so when you see our reports, some systems will report all of those pocket knives, when you see our reports as weapons, you report them all, because they are weapons, so ours, like, weapons, so we'll, I don't report. And most of them are clearly instantly robbed, not robbed to use a weapon, but.
It doesn't matter the size.
It doesn't matter the size. If they hurt, they're too much fight.
Yeah, that's what the pocket knives tend to be, one of our greatest issue, well, it's mostly an issue now with the rest of us, and even an elder interest will, you know, be used, especially with, um, certain student populations and the population, to ensure that that's, that's legal. So, what we do not, and never have now, I guess, is, because I don't work in that system, but I do believe that at that end of the system, there is some reference given to the, the link of the app, and say whether or not that's reported.
But the.
Yeah, we've never done that, it's a pocket app for all those times, I don't think it could be able.
And some are listed in other places as possession of a property or something like that. But we do, we do report them, because if you don't know what you got, you don't, it can impact if you have, if you are putting places, or building some strategy, or, you don't know what you're doing, you won't know anything, but that's, that's a lot of weird moving.
We have competition, well, and your principal's last month, and what other strategies can we do to help parents understand that it's important to check the look back, or to talk about what you realized at home? Because that's what you know, that lots of families have taught their child how they do this and that, but it just comes to.
We had one of those last year, I think it was kindergarten, or, it's, it's already like, a teacher leading the school out today, because he was being, he stole the pocket knife on you.
Okay, you didn't say there are tolerance policies, or taking into consideration each case.
It is, every, every take, every, every case is taken individually, which is totally important.
That's a great example, you know, we, we.
The consequence, the consequence of your, depending on the next situation, this still reports that.
Oh, she's positive, or thank you.
Full of investigation, if you ever take other cases, it's, it's quite, quite possible that by the time you, for the, for the, you, and this is the investigation that is due part, if you have suspension, that we look at, um, in kind of serious conduct, and what it might, what it might entail, and what makes sense. This case is typically bound by our restoration, all the interview process, uh, any type of video recording of the personal cameras, or a teacher reports to see what's been. Student records, of course, students who are recorded on the NCEV system, it does not become part of the printed, printed record after the end of that school year. It, it still is maintained in NCEV, it is not part of the transcript, it's a catalogues. So, this number is not part, is not part of the set, is not part of the transcript. So, this kind of talks about what the, what the record bar and lots of the process person. Parents can request that records be explained, and have that process. We're going to, we're going to bury this school day. This is when there are short-term suspensions, the principal mayor, looking from the school ground, sees that there's been, it's been during the school day, under these circumstances. If there is transportation available, parents able to get there, make arrangements, if the school agrees, there's units using public transportation, arriving at some of our cell phones, as the last we have, other factors kind of outlines of the reasons for the, the circumstances. If none of that sort of expenses exist, suspension will be denied next year. When we have a forty-three fifty grade, there is a check. Are there long-term suspensions, and frequencies about this, that's the right to do, and look at policy, we might, if we change the justice or permission patterns, when we get to have the, the reasons for a long-term suspension, or pre-honest setting, only get that to super benefit decision, we, we have to make the changes there. What will happen as a result of this new policy and forty-three seventy that was lifted, is that if a student is being considered for long-term suspension, as required by law, that recommendation will come to the principal to the superintendent's level. The superintendent then has the responsibility for, for considering whether an alternative education setting will be considered, that is what is required by law, the changes to law, the, 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 that, if that alternative education decision, decision say, then there is no reason to go forward with a long-term suspension. So, the recommendation is first by the superintendent, the superintendent decides that alternative education setting is not appropriate, then it goes back to the principal, we call it the hearing board within the, within the school district, and the hearing board looks at that to decide, to make a recommendation about upholding or altering the recommendation of the principal at that time, and then that comes back to the superintendent, the recommendation comes back to the hearing board, the superintendent, about long-term suspension. The hearing board is a container, and the container is, is one of the five people with supervision at the regular level, and they are representatives, the representative from each school and district is on the hearing board, and nobody under the direct supervision of the, of the school where that student faces, but the, the administrator who's making the recommendation comes into the team there, not the, the. I found that, and it will pay in a way, over the last two years, the process works really, but sometimes the, the hearing boards have determined to uphold the recommendation of long-term suspension, and sometimes they come back and say, "We really feel that this student needs an alternative education setting, and we need another option," so they're very, very judicious in considering the evidence presented, and, and making recommendations back to the principal and superintendent, so, I'm very, very, it's not that all just the taken to it, and they look at it very carefully, and consider it, and, and all the mitigating factors, and, 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 very reasonable recommendations. Again, this one, I'll go down, there's forty-three seventy, that kind of gets lifted, and the principal will, will go back to the other two. Forty-three seventy, this is through what the, how the hearing will be conducted, of procedures, not over the hearing board. Again, it follows that, that procedure that says, if the container writes a letter back to the superintendent with recommendations of the team, and then the decision is made, if it's a tie-bond, it has, the hearing has to be held within ten days of the beginning of the suspension, and then the decision is made, and you can do that after that. All this, that follows the procedure, those two are actually really, really long-term suspension, definitely part of. Any questions about those, or, or? Go back to forty-three fifty four.
I guess the hearings, um, either anxious, or not just a long-term suspension.
A long-term suspension is the only time that the hearing board is in place, the long-term suspension. There's not a deal for short-term suspension process.
I don't know if that's part of the grievance process we're looking at.
If there's a grievance process, if there's a, if there's a, they have, they have to be, they'll separate, but there's not a, not a deal process for short-term suspension, for long-term suspension. This is the, this, the forty-three fifty four, this, this is a lot of different sections, each student participating in, in, in athletics, and it's, that's considered with their academic averages, maybe suspended, but there's also a hearing board, and, and athletic suspensions.
So, for some reason, I get asked about this policy more than any other policy.
Athletics are analog.
Which is funny, because it's athletics and not academics, but, so the fact that it's black means that this is, this is the state school board policy.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that helps.
Can we put the hundred mile rule back in?
Oh, yeah, we use one, thirty mile rule.
Well, if you call it the.
With the eighty miles.
I was, I was, so we had to run a hundred miles, and then.
I would have called a hundred thousand.
You do that, huh?
I don't have to do that.
That was it. My cousin had to do it, my cousin had to do it, that's why I know that.
And the other thing.
It was a deterrent, watching her run a hundred miles.
The question I also get is why it only applies to athletics and not other extracurricular?
That's a good question.
I mean, I get that about, why isn't it banned? I don't know if cheer, I guess cheerleading's included in this, any kind of after-school activity. But if, I guess, I don't know the answer to that, I guess, just, how would y'all answer that question?
I think that would be up to the board, of course, including with athletics, we require, I'd say, to have parent meetings, and have parent meetings against this policy very clearly, and there's a signature from that parent, but it is considered extracurricular if it is, you know, launched in a participation, or, yes, to be included in the, you know, on its club, or, or, so, I love, I'll play you back, instead of, is that, we have certainly discussed, and that is, that is a common question.
Well, so this is, help me define this in terms of telling people, this is required by the high school athletic association, this is recommended by the high school, this is.
I think that it's required by your determination, that's about the long-term suspension, but I, I'd have to look at the.
No, no, I'm not, I'm just trying to think of my explanation.
But, I don't know, I don't know.
Okay. I'll ask it again when it comes back up, or between now and.
You know, and you can say that, depending on the school band is, it's sort of part of the grade, that, you know.
I will, I will find out the answer to that question, and, and, you know, all of you.
Well, it varies.
Rattles is an extracurricular, or a band is.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll find the answer out, about the athletic association, and make sure you get the answer. I've heard of people, for sure.
And I've heard of people picking up an extra sport so that they wouldn't, which I, that didn't seem quite right either, but if you follow that.
Making up an exciting understatement.
If they're just playing basketball, as just complete example, and before the next basketball season comes up, they'll play the spring sports, so that they get disqualified for the spring sports, so that they can play basketball, they'll follow.
God, you people in Black Mountain are.
There's also a field process, there's also a field process, I actually, I don't recall those boards, that if students, is, is, alcohol, and they, and counseling, and they do other things, I mean, the field back, the boards, and, like, the field back, by those, those, the, the, yes, they also feel to regain the right, but, 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 the impact of the board.
And this does take, this does not override the coaches, individual coaches, why, do, to make the call, because ultimately, they select who's on that, and they establish what their codes of conduct are, we continue to emphasize that, but this is difficult, I mean, you must do, I, I know all of you, and, and, if you do probably get calls on this, that, with alcohol consumption, this is one of those that goes beyond the stop, goes into weekends, sometimes it goes into off-season.
Goes into alcohol consumption, wherever they are, at home parties, that's going to take.
It's probably takes more of a high school principal's time to do that to get them, and.
It's hard to sit on those committees where you have to look right square in the eye at the kid that likes to play, and say, "I'm real sorry, you've broken the rules, you can't do it," it's more devastating than failing English, I'll tell you.
And my, and on the other hand, I'm telling you, I think that having that process of appeal is extremely important, but on the other side of that, we've seen students that have very little realization how important athletics is, when they're sitting there facing all those six athletic directors, five, six they don't know, that, I think that's a, that's an incredible learning experience for those, for those typical student athletes who have a misfortune, who, who, for that.
We will email you all down.
And, and, I mean, it's something that we can address before, we can address any kind of extracurricular activities, I mean.
I have a sneaky suspicion right now that this is required in your participation by the high school association, which is a voluntary suspension, everyone to remember.
But that would be a great thing to tell people that are.
I, I can find that out very quickly.
I think it would be kind of interesting to try to create a, a policy.
No, no, I don't think I want to go there, but I think I do want to understand, it, it helps me to know where it comes from, about that one.
But we probably should, I mean, if we're concerned about a student's well-being and making right choices, then what's going to be said about the lead in the play who decides to, you know, go out and party, make poor choices, and make such a three lead in the play, doesn't really mind either.
I think, I think where we have to be careful, where it's going to be sticky is where it's required for grade, where, where your participation is required for your grade, and then, like, that example, obviously, most of the kids are probably, or, the vast majority are in drama class, but I agree with you, I mean, I, I think it's, I think it's important that everyone have that same, you, you know, it's, to a lot of them, it's a way out of peer pressure, you know, because, I, I can't do that, I'm playing football, or, you know, I'm, I'm in a divorce, and, you know.
And it doesn't have excuses.
Yeah, exactly.
It's like my parents are at home, and I can't do.
Just like that hundred miles, you know, it's a tough ride for us.
I would say, Suzanne said, if, if, back to what I'm saying, it, it can get very sticky, and it does make incredible amount, for those, for that administration, but I think the key to it is that regardless of, of having influence on like this, upfront, you have to make sure those participants know these are the rules, this is the conduct we're going to follow, and if you violate it, here are repercussions, just can't follow, this was fine.
And parents do know that, because the parent, you can, you can, you can.
Suzanne, could you check and say if there's any other school districts?
Oh, yeah, I'll, I'll look and see if any, if any district has a policy that looks at extracurricular activities.
I would be interested to look at their policies, to see how they have that.
All it does is, is, at least some of the surrounding, some of the other districts that are about our class.
I'm unaware of any of them locally that have policies like that, but they do exist. I mean, the United States Supreme Court has dealt with this issue in drug testing context, and the court has said you can drug test athletes, and you can drug test the lead in play, they're all, that's all part of the same, they're all leaders of school, and they're in extracurricular activities, and that is a, not something that they're entitled to, so I'm sure that there will be policies out there dealing with other extracurricular activities.
That's, that's good, though, I mean, that's, that's.
Yeah, I mean, the Supreme Court takes no issue, and they, they don't see a quarterback in the drug mayhem area, but with that being said, I don't know any policies.
Since you brought it up, drug testing. Are there any schools in North Carolina, the show, that are, that are doing drug testing?
For who?
Or extracurricular.
I don't know many.
I know there's, I know there's some that are doing it.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't know. Now, I mean, reasonable, reasonable suspicion based on drug testing, yes.
They just ran them.
There have been attempts, but I do know that, you know, that's for.
Did they fail miserly, or?
The answer is that it took the test.
I just know that the board has, I, I can't, I can't, they didn't have, I think it was anything for that.
Yes, it was.
I have another question about this suspension of athletes, the policy general about the hearing, that sort of thing, is there another policy that specifically gives the steps as far as what a student has to do to appeal the suspension, or is this all?
This is the, the, they're, we've got, the only thing that matters in here, in terms of the procedure, but we, there is a procedure that is in place, the doctrine of the procedure.
I don't know if she'd be part of this policy, or.
The procedure kind of is, is, can be separate, as long as it's, if you have the right to hear, the policy says allow, then the procedure's going to say no.
But we're not putting that specific procedure in.
Who can issue a copy of that, without there is a period of time that you require the board to be able to.
You can't immediately appeal that, and there has to basically, the, 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 the capacity is for you to show that you take this test to correct the, the problem, and be able to present that back.
We can, you know, that, that's.
I guess I've said on more or two of those, something, people that, we were showing at the last, I'll say, the, the, the athletic directory, those are showing, what the model of is, and I typically have to look at cases, they got something from the back, and says, "I've got the counseling, I've got this, I've got this, I've got this," kind of nasty breakdown, to, 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 usually that's significant, it's, it's, it's. Maybe have students who are long-term suspended, suspended for three hundred and sixty-five days, or expelled, they can appeal back to the superintendent, be allowed to come back to school, and after the hundred and eighty day suspension, and this, this, when they're eligible to be ineligible to, to appeal on whether these students, to request that people, you know, suspended students, suspended students who are three hundred and sixty-five days, have to prove that they are, have to satisfy the superintendent's questions, that they are not a danger to these two populations, or that they are taking the interest in right and happy danger, so that is the, that is the procedure for me, you know, that has to be after the hundred and eighty day suspension. And last, is student records. Student records, uh, covers the, the FERPA notification that happens at the beginning of the year, most retired by FERPA, how the public noticed, and it is gathered, we get it up online, and we have written documentation that will be on the office for annual notices, definition of parent and eligible student, eligible students, anybody who agrees with age majority of eighteen, and is a tenured institution. Humanity records, this is the requirements of what is included in our humanity record, and annual humanity record. Their screen annual, they have corrections of the materials of older development, and negative additions, and they're stored in lockable places.
So that the list of things that have to be in the human record is set by the state law?
Yes, is required on statutes. And we have a, we have a discretion, the state has the discretion manual that says when, and how it can be restored and covered, student records have to be maintained forever, but we don't need to maintain anything that might happen to the student, so they're purged prior to be sent to us, and we digitize them, and, and we make a lockable copy, and once we have those two act on us, after two years being restored records, we can have those two back, but the, the records themselves, we just don't keep them there for anymore. Like, I have, I have about twenty boxes of my own, that are big, pretty, so, it's huge, it's, I'm.
And what years would those be, David?
Those would be from two years ago, it's a graduate, two years ago.
Bob and I were a little worried that maybe ours might be out.
Well, we used to keep, I'm told, I'm told about three or four years ago, we used to keep all the paper copies, and they were just, they were restored somewhere, but we took a couple lots and lots and lots, we were, we were back in the nineteen thirties, nineteen twenties, so we had lots and lots of records, but we still have a few of those
I understand Ms. Lopez has enjoyed a search in that cavernous area before.
We have, just this year, gone to digital storage of our student records for disabilities, so there are many, 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 many top cabinets of, of those files, that actually were taken and viewed for disabilities, and they probably recorded, recorded, that's what I'm saying.
Sure, not being funny, curiously, so the court would accept a digitized version? In the event that a special.
Yeah, actually, but, a lot of the records, we, we didn't even need a copy, let them put on some distance, and, and, the majority of requests that we get from those old records are around disability issues, or if people are applying for a passport, and they can't go to a, it's, for sure. or if people are applying for a passport and they can't, or should. We have lots and lots of rest of our records. There's a new section of records, I'll tell you, children, they're still there. We also define in our policy, and FERPA defines what could be considered direct reinformation, that we, we can release direct reinformation, as I've heard from the local school system, and decide what that is, and we have chosen not to, it's our thing. We've chosen not to include emails and data placement. Those could be considered direct re, but we have chosen not to, there's too many things around confidentiality and stealing identities that are wrapped in this constitution, and we do not give out those.
So, I guess in the past, some PTAs that I've been on have produced a direct re, usually just phone number. So, is that what you're saying, if you release, like if a PTA wants to put one of those?
If it's direct reinformation, we can put certain direct reinformation, we have to release it about normal conditions. I mean, as long as parents, parents have the right to opt out of that, at the beginning of the year with public notice, they can say, I don't want any information we have about my child. If they don't choose to opt out, we can release this direct reinformation. But we have chosen not to include email addresses for data placement. A lot, just around safety issues, we don't, we're putting out kids' emails.
So, if I call the school and I wanted to arrange a play date with one of my child's, my child's friends, and I didn't know the parent's phone number, can I call the school and say, well, so-and-so's phone number, and we give it to you, I don't know if that's what.
I can say that, no, I won't.
No, the law states that specifies who, what is direct reinformation, and who are you going to give direct reinformation to. You can decide, we're only going to give it to these types of people for these reasons.
If the ETO was asking for it, that may be, that may be a reasonable request, if you're able to do something that would be direct re. But if it's just an individual calling.
And I will say that I have done that, and they've refused. And I, I mean, it wasn't a test, I was actually trying to find somebody easily, and then I thanked them for doing that, because that's exactly what they're supposed to do.
You don't really know who's on the other end of that.
I really appreciate that, it's happened two or three times, yeah.
All right, any questions, any other questions?
If I go to page three, there's the, the list of what community record includes at a minimum, is that the state law, the state law just requires this minimum, or is the law, or federal law, whichever law it is, requiring it? Is that what the law, I need to.
Okay.
I'd be able to bring my law book and the pressure.
Okay, the statute says, the official record shall contain at a minimum adequate qualifications data, including data per attendance data, grading information data, and other such factual information, and may be even further reviewed by the local education having jurisdiction over the student wherein the record is maintained. Each student's official record shall also include notice of any long-term suspension or expulsion pursuant to public law. The superintendent or superintendent shall expunge from the record and exit suspension. Each local board policy on student record should have the information procedure for expulsion. The actual address until the number of students participating in the address confidentiality program, or a student parent who's participated in that program should not be disclosed.
What's the number of the statute?
115C402.
So, if a child breaks down on the playground, for example, during school hours, is that information included in the student record?
No. Now, that doesn't mean that there is not a record that's kept of that by a school, by the individual teacher, or by records that are kept outside, instant reports, those sorts of things, and health records. And then keep in mind, there are wholly other sets of records dealing with, for instance, students, students disabled, disability, IEP records, health records, their integration records. None of those, this, they are different, wholly different capular records that are kept separate. This is just a student's community record, and we try to keep that very well, and just require information.
So, do we, I don't know the name of the policy that says student records, does that need to be defined as to which type of records, or are we just, we address different records? Okay, I see that.
Student services director, special ed, special ed director, cafeteria, public, federal law.
Yeah, there's seven, it identifies seven types.
All right, any other questions or comments?
I have a question about the student rest, just, because she has a teenager. Is there a reason that it's not that the original school, so, to, like, the rest of the law?
As of right now, with this, this matter, student residents are, we're able to, what we, what the policy tries to do is give a standard to that, and maybe through the additional student discipline data.
So, is that, that student rest code policy 4316, is that, has that had anything like that?
We actually have. We actually have.
Have you had any concerns about?
It does vary.
Yes.
It does vary.
Especially in prom.
All times are good.
All times are good.
I've heard anything that goes here.
They still fall off? To me, having a cross-the-law policy, we're not concerned, but I didn't know if there was a reason to have it.
We, we talked about this sometime, within the last couple of years. But the one, one reason that I thought was good to have it at the individual level was that it empowered the students. And while that was coming, while we were discussing it, Owen was going through that process, and all the students were involved, and they had surveys.
They had surveys.
I mean, they really, really empowered the students to come up with their own, their own decision.
That is what, that's encouraged in the policy, to involve, to involve your student government, involve your students, involve your advisory boards, and really developing the policy.
It worked really well at Owen, but.
That's good, that's interesting, it says, try and involve.
As many people as possible, and developing that policy.
Josh Wallen, have you ever, I haven't heard anything about rest code in a couple of years, two, three years.
Because I was thinking in spring weather.
In the spring, you usually hear a little bit more downwind, because things just.
Fall out?
Short blocks.
Short blocks.
You know, our question always, who did get individual health, regarding specific schools, there is varying, there is varying as to the person, our questions, can't question. Was, was the policy, the specifics of the policy, was it communicated to the students? In those cases, they're actually something in writing, and if it was, they were communicated, were given a notification, and if that particular administration knows once again, so that the, the policy, it is, and if that is the intent of the school improvement, the student government, and there's going to need to be an effort, if you put a rule in place, then expectations are, you know, to force it, if not, you don't need a rule.
Do you think there's a way to make sure the principals know, you know, you're suggesting, using these words to help you come up with it? Rest code, once you all pass the policy, absolutely. So, once this policy is effective, we will be having those conversations for planning on that year, and we should include this issue in the Treasury Board.
I think, like you said, students are much more receptive to it when they actually have a role in helping to address.
And I think it varies from telling me to because, well, it's cute on a, a used school student, might have the same form and shape as something that doesn't, like even on a high school student. Or a different sized child, so if, that's literally correct.
I know it was, I just have to tell the story, one of my friends that works for Asher City gave her, the people that she supervised, permission to dress down Friday. And so, it got to be springtime, and these women were wearing shorts, and she said, this woman had this really nice pair of shorts on, but they were too small. And so, she let it go the first time, and the second time, she called the lady in, and she said, you know, I can tell that those are really nice shorts, and she said, yes. And this woman said, and I'm sure they sell them in your size.
Thank you, Parker, so there's just a few other policies, we're going to take a little bit more time on, hopefully by next time we'll have these kind of policy, just really felt, we've gotten a lot of input from parents and committee, and everything expanded committee, a lot of it affect by administrators, and get more input from, from, who will actually be responsible for that, that policy, and then bring it back to, to the topic last year. There's another one on student surveys, and there are a couple of others that have multiple numbers that involve the category, and they just are best covered probably either in personal or corporate, that may have a 40, without a number, but they seem to relate better in other areas, if other, if they have their data.
Do you have any suggestions coming in for the policies that were presented to you today? Because, maybe a little later in the calendar month, you would give those suggestions to me on Monday, March 18. What's that, Monday, March 18? Monday, March 18.
I will get, I will try to get the answer to that question back to you next week.
Our next policy section will begin in the finance section, and Ms. Parker will be with us on April 11, before morning, and we'll start that section.
I know, I've been told this, and I apologize for forgetting, but we approve, the policies that are on the agenda tonight are up for approval. And once they are approved, then they're uploaded onto the website, or no?
Yes.
They are immediately, and so, we then follow.
We have two different numbering systems.
Right.
It's a bit confusing, because we, until we get it approved by you, everything is still old system. And so, as we add each section, we're getting a little bit newer, we're trying to document that, so that it's easy to see.
It's really an interesting process, good for, very talk.
Back to the other side, it's not, it's the. Paula and Connie are getting up on.
That wasn't a complaint, that was just letting me try to clarify that.
Well, while, since we're sort of talking about that right now, was everybody okay with the consent agenda with, for this, particularly, did anybody have any questions they'd like to ask on the policies that are up for approval? Anything we need to discuss? Anything we need to pull from the consent agenda? And put on the action agenda? Take a few minutes and look at those and.
I'd like to look service handles. It's a joke. I was thinking about policy 1740, and I did not have time to go through it.
1740?
That's up for first reading, I had a question, so I had to pull that out.
Well, that's not really, we can talk about that.
I will not pull it, right, we don't have to pull it.
Well, I mean, we're not voting on it, too.
You just be asking.
Yeah, I mean, if you want to ask a question about it, you can certainly ask now, or.
I have questions about the, on the consent agenda, the student transfers and remaps for 2013-14. Is that 2013-14? No, just, I'm talking about the student, the student transfer, 2013-14.
Is that something we can discuss in open session?
I don't know.
Student transfers, maybe close session.
Okay.
If there's a question about student transfers, I'm probably checking out the.
Okay, well, first of all, is everybody okay with the 1000s, the 4000s, and the 6000s? We can leave all those on the consent agenda, ones that are up for approval.
I believe that's correct.
Okay. Whenever you're ready, Ms. Wallen, you can, did you want to ask your question now, or?
Well, I'll say it without.
That's what I learned over here, so. We got plenty of time.
Somebody else wants to talk about something.
Can I throw out a random thing?
Yes, go ahead.
I worry that Ms. Parker spends too much time on that monthly budget update, and I don't know, I was just thinking about that, and I just, it's a lot of detail. I don't know if anybody else feels that way or not. I read that thing, and I was like, I cannot believe she spends this much time on that. And I don't know if there, I mean, I don't know if there's a way to summarize it, or do it quarterly where we look at a lot, but just on a monthly basis, that has to be a day worth of work. Yeah, maybe the only one that takes that. It's 13 pages.
Yeah, that's a lot of information.
Lot of different ways of looking at it. And if it was a once a quarter type thing, I think that would make sense, but God, should do it every month?
As detailed more, after that she is, if she, would she be okay with? I'm curious, but. I think we're just saying about how much time.
It has to be at least a day.
Well, when we have our budget work session, maybe you can ask a question.
I mean, if she feels that it's, it's.
I guess, another way of asking the question is, do we have to do a, do we have to update the budget monthly? Could it be updated every two months? So, I'll talk to you.
Can I just throw something out there, Austin?
Yes.
Just one of my thoughts that I've been having. Has there ever been any?
Has there ever been any consideration to try to lay, I guess you could say gender specific class, like at the middle school level?
No, Springs does have one team that, um, is a junior school and they're a team doing some research, went to some conference and started at maybe about two or three years ago. It hasn't been going well, but it is a, it's a post on the parent's end, the rest of all their child.
I would imagine it'd be similar to like, you know, having, if parents would sign your child like they would for the, um...
Immersion?
Yes.
Or whatever.
Something like that. I was just wondering, but I had, um, a big friend of mine has her child at Carolina Day and that was actually one of the reasons she didn't have a child with you later and that all the, I didn't know if they ever considered it or not. So they've been doing it for a couple of years now.
I think this might be the third year.
But I noticed, um, how's the, I guess I could call that.
The anecdote of that is very similar, um, white teachers, white students, um, that are very individual. I don't think they pulled anybody out this year and had any questions or complaints about it.
Is there a waitlist?
I don't have that stuff.
Is that any, oh.
Be a comment.
That would have even hired those seven weeks?
I wouldn't have to go back. They've done well across the board, and I was pretty sure I'm not sure if we'd have saved across the board yet.
It's not outstanding, but luckily, you know, the rest of them.
But it's also depending on the team.
I just heard some of the research, especially with men and that age of a girl, um, they tend to not want to look too smart, but there's a lot of boys sitting around and so they may not show just how smart they really politically didn't like a bad student. But, um, and, and then those students, you know, they let their children hire their kids when they're, I think, let their hair down.
I would think that, all that estrogen.
And, you know, certainly not as a requirement, but I was just wondering if there was something else. I'm letting other schools.
Ms. Baldwin, you have your questions?
Um, well, I think, um, the grievance procedure.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, I can't hear anything I'm talking about.
Sorry, got it.
Of policy seventeen forty, uh, the grievance procedure, this is up for first reading and I haven't done a lot on this. I was just comparing it to the one, um, that Wayne County had. And this just might be something to do later because they actually have a whole webpage on their website that simplifies the whole procedure for parents and, uh, and I did, I think I made a copy of it, but I could give, I'll just have, um, make some copies when we have the breaks, you can see how they, um, did their procedures. You read through this, it gets a little bit confusing and I'm just, because it's very detailed, which is good.
Our proposed procedure is detailed, is that what you're saying?
Yeah. It's six pages long. And, um, and I don't know if it includes, um, transportation preferences, like a school bus issue or a bus stop, because that's something people have brought to me before too. And I know the student attendant, everybody's worked with them, but, um, would that include, I guess my question is, what all does this include that they agree for? Does it have to be a board policy, state or federal law or regulation? Because that keeps getting mentioned in here and even I'm getting confused as to whether I can appeal anything I want to or if it has to fall within those categories up in board policy or law.
Well, the first, uh, the first paragraph, you know, says the board strives to resolve concerns and complaints of students and parents whenever possible. So it's pretty wide open.
Right. And I just started reading the nitty gritty and it started making me wonder what would apply, but I'll just make copies of this. You can Google Wayne County schools grievance and, uh, and I'd be too. I like the way they have it on their website too, in addition to being in the policy manual. So it lays it out clear for parents. And that might be something we want to consider after we pass the policy. Yeah.
Okay. Anything else?
The only other thing in here that was bothering me was, um, saying that if there were a group of people, a group of parents that had a concern, that it would be considered that they may have to meet individually, um, with the, I don't know if that was for a hearing or... Uh, I just...
Where is that?
I thought it was the other way around. I thought it was, uh, there's a group of parents.
So that says we have the right.
Right.
To hear them individually.
Depends on the nature of the information and if it's confidential information, you certainly can't meet with multiple parents at the same time.
Right. I know in some cases that tends to make the parents a little nervous about, uh, maybe coming forward, but not with their group, but it's where, um, you know, they might be meeting individually with several other people on the other side, so to speak. So it kind of puts them at a disadvantage. But I know it doesn't say for sure that that would happen. I think it just said, hey, um, that's what I would have.
Here again, I guess it's gonna be up to what's being discussed at the time. And I certainly don't think that anybody's gonna turn away a group of people if they wanna sit down and talk unless they're talking confidential information. And then there's just no way you can meet as a group.
Right. I think the only thing I got, I've heard some parents come to me and say, um, you know, we had AIG concerns, but we were told we had to come and meet individually with the principal or with whomever. And that disturbed them. And some people said, well, I'm not gonna be unless I can do it with my friends. But I just, the wording is sufficient. And I'm just not sure that I, I would like to read up. Maybe the board and officials and parents have the discretion. I don't know. I'd like the parents to have some input into whether they wanna be heard individually or as a group. It seems like it's gonna come from the top downside, we wanna hear individually.
I just want caution was forward. If I have the principal's contact being asked without meeting with all three of the parents I'm with, I'm gonna ask the question again and we talk to general information. Because out of respect for parents, I hope, I'll use my own children. I would certainly not, as bad, an administrator to be sitting down with another parent referencing my child. And I think that should take precedence, precedence over everyone. Because if the pipeline is not right, the borderline is not right in the fall. So I, I think we, we have to be very careful. And I, I would worry that it, and again, I may miss my experience, but, um, if the parents have the option, it's your call entirely. You won't show up as a dozen individuals that sit in that principal's office without the principal having an opportunity to look through and get information prior to that meeting. I think we're heading down wrong with it. And I think I have standards representing our administrative. And for the most part of our school system, I think we've got open resources. The other thing I would say, well, parent, and I've had this happen before, if they don't wanna come in and sit down individually, they have to have someone else sitting inside them. And I wonder a little bit about the, um, about their dedication to what they have to say in the calls that they're representing, if I have to have someone else sitting inside them. I just, uh, from an administrator standpoint, uh, just like that's the wrong, wrong direction to go. Chairman, I, Ron Hart, I believe that there is balance and I think a administrator's fine. And there are times where that is appropriate, that we sit down with multiple, multiple parents, multiple stakeholders, but again, if there is any reference to other students, that puts this school system, that puts that administrator on real thin line. And that's coming from this administration.
So, um, I could make a suggestion, if you were using AIG as an example, with the possibility of forming a page group, I would encourage those parents to step up to the plate and be part of that steering committee. I just always think that you should be part of the solution. And we definitely still need four people.
Okay. Anything else?
So, yes, my other question about transportation issues, we thought that probably would be covered by this policy too, because you read the first sentence about...
Says any complaint or concerns? Is there anything else on the agenda anyone else to discuss?
Can I ask about another thing?
Sure.
Any thoughts about having the eBoard solutions team come in and do a presentation? I know that, um, several of the administrative people at, um, NCSBA have been writing about it and it just seems like when I went to their, um, discussion and presentation in November, they had a lot of, um, you know, it just seemed like they had a lot of really good ideas and ways to make things simpler. And while it may, you know, while it may be expensive, I'm just, would be curious to hear if in the long run, there would be a savings. And as we're gonna be talking about budgets soon, just know that it was an idea to invite these people to just come and do a presentation at a work session like this. You know, I haven't been committed to anything, but I do.
Did, um, I was able to attend that, the works, the session at the North County School Board Association. Did anyone else get a chance to attend it? Does any, is everyone in a time to share what it is? Maybe just kind of summarize for everyone kind of what it is and if there's an interest in, uh, you know, anybody show of hands, we could, uh, see if we could get something to, uh...
Okay, I, um, I'll read off theirs because it's funny that I'm bringing this up because I'm probably the least.
I don't know, Amy.
I don't know either.
Okay. So, um, it just says, you've been thinking about going paperless with your board. Board meeting packets are expensive to produce, cumbersome to sort through. You've looked at several e-government solutions. Why should we choose eBoard? Um, it goes beyond paperless meetings. Um, they have six integrated web-based governance modules. Effective governance requires strategic planning, sound policy, effective meetings, communications and evaluations. EBoards can help with all of these. Let's see. EBoard ensures alignment to goals, exclusive strategic plan management, evaluation modules, um, which, if I remember right, that had to do with how we did evaluations with administration. And I believe that there was a, a way that you could link in and have, um, parents have easy access to, um, where my time is right here.
Student information?
Yes.
Their grades and stuff?
I guess similar to what we're, well, not even just our student information, but, the going, the goings on, like it's a little easier to, to work through going on, um, an eBoard solution website. It's more interactive, I guess, is the word that I'm looking for. You went to, you know, related to my things, right? You know, I'm trying to want to be, um...
Maybe, uh, maybe if you could email them and see if there is a online presentation or maybe a DVD that they could send us.
I know that you can go onto their website and it would show part of that.
You know, why don't you, why don't you see, instead of asking the folks to travel all the way up here, maybe there's something we can send to the board that they can watch or read and then we can kind of get a consensus as to whether or not that's something that we're interested in having them come and do a presentation. Because I hate to...
Actually, the guy, when I talked to the District Eight meeting back in Fall, in Pope County, um, he was, he said, I wanna come, you know, that's what he does for a living, is go to your school system, do the presentation, visit cost of anything. So that's what they do. And they don't require anyone, because I don't think they want us to copy anything that they have, because I asked about one of the shows, uh, going out and I said, can I get a copy of that?
Well, I mean, if you want to come back and kind of see, yeah, what, what they think, I mean, we could probably find out how much time they would need and maybe we could try to work that into a work session.
Their website has an eBoard video overview, a test drive eBoard, custom showcase and then cost savings calculator.
I like the way it links the strategic plan to whatever you're doing so you can see that you're, you know, in line with your goals for your school system.
Send everyone an email with the website and whatever other information you can have and, and at the next works, next, uh, work session that we have, we'll see if folks are interested in doing that.
Okay. Um, and I apologize for not having brought my bags in a right way, but it was kind of just a, I looked down there and realized I still had it sitting in my bag, but...
Didn't it bring you back?
I brought it back.
Ms. Baldwin, you sent an email saying there was something you needed to discuss with me. Is that something we can discuss here?
Oh, I wanted to get clarification about, um, I got an email from Chris Campbell too, but it still wasn't clear exactly what happened.
I think this is a discussion we need to have in closed session.
I don't know, just about, will we vote on that amended personnel report if we were voting on it?
I think this is a discussion we need to have in closed session. Is there anything else?
Well, Pat's not here and, oh, is he coming later?
He's sick.
Oh, okay.
He won't be here.
Oh, okay. Cause he had asked in an email about letting the minority report and, um, cause I had mentioned on my agenda items about being concerned with minority folks being stifled by the abuse of permanent procedure. And I had sent the page from school one oh one about permanent procedure. Um, and it's, it's still a concern right now. And I'll just read a little bit of this school board one oh one page. This is a presentation Allison Shane from Jen and Kathy Boyd too, when I went to school board one oh one a while back. But it basically says, the right to speak is as important as the right to vote. And every matter presented should be discussed fully and every member has the right to speak. And it says for small boards, which we are, considered a small board, um, that the usual rule that members may speak only twice on a question does not apply to small boards. There's no limit to the number of times a member may speak to a question and motions to close or limit debate generally should not be entertained. So I just, you know, I just wanna be, you know, we were all elected to represent our constituents and I think we all should be heard. Uh, you know, we all have, uh, we're, we're the voice of the people, uh, because they can't come and, and speak here except for three minutes. Uh, I just wanna make sure that, that everybody, um, you know, it also... I just want to make sure that, that everybody, um, you know, it also says all members have equal rights.
Got to get that when you get through.
Yeah, I'll, I can make copies of, of this, too. All members have equal rights, the majority rules, but the minority, that's the minority report. The minority has the right to be heard and attempt to sway the majority, um, so I just wanted to make sure we're protecting the rights of every member.
That is, uh, when I was taking, I was during the session, but some use of purpose, purposes as well for democracies.
Do you want to have anything else to say?
Well, I just, I'm, I mean, I agree that there does need to be, um, enough time for everybody to feel that they got their point across, but, um, but at the same time, and I think you said, you did a very good, you say, um, minority to sway the majority, um, but then again, after that's been done, and the decision's been made, I'm not so sure that we need to continue to go back and continue to try to sway once the vote has been made. And I think sometimes that's what's.
Well, I mean, my, uh, once we've heard something two or three times, it's time to move on. Being repetitive is not going to change an idea. By prolonging a speech, because you talk for longest, or you repeat it enough, doesn't mean that it's going to be right or it's going to change anyone's mind, so, I mean, we, once we've heard the same thing over and over, it's time to move on.
No, I'm just not sure we're hearing these things over and over again, uh, considering sometimes it's the first time it's been on the agenda.
It was funny, because I was looking at this to see if it said what both of y'all have said, because I feel like that's the case, is that we hear the same thing over and over again, but it doesn't say anything about that.
Well, it's a good thing we can't fill a box for.
Um, well, I mean, I just think if we could summarize the board and agree that we will be respectful to listen if there's a second, um, and be respectful of each other's time, and the public's time, um, I've had a lot of people say that there was absolutely no way they were coming to a board meeting, because they know how long they last. Uh, if they're interested, they want a synopsis, but they, um, don't want to be here all night, and I can understand. But, you know, so I think if we could all come into agreement that we're going to use the end timer, so to speak, um, get our point across as quickly as possible, with the least amount of interruptions, respectful, and then go forward with whatever votes, then, I mean, I think that's all that you can ask, if you can.
Agreed?
I keep going like I'm preaching.
Agreed, understand?
Yeah, I, I'm not aware of any instances where anybody was, uh, you know, who had to do, or do the same things over and over again. I'm not aware of those.
Well, we've been talking about the STEM, STEM school for quite some time now, and it, it doesn't seem to be any more new information.
I think it's when you're debating a motion that's on the floor, and, uh, which is the case of the last meeting regarding allocating the funding, uh, that was a different issue than specific STEM program, um, I'm not really that bushed, and then all of them have been asked. And perhaps some people just don't like to hear, say, the reasons, or something that they, you know, if they're on the other side of the aisle, that issue.
I agree with this.
I, I factually asked it on the conversation.
All right. Anything else, yes, sir?
One quick, um, just for information purposes, so you'll have this where you're thinking about, uh, policy four three five four, suspension of suspending, uh, in this last act, right? That is a policy that is, is a, I say is a unique policy from the county, just because that is a nice school association policy, and, and there's no requirement for this sort of expulsion that I can find in the athletic campus. Now, in the next few days, I'll see if I can find other systems that have a similar policy. That would take more time than I've got right now, um, but, uh, yeah, this is a.
So, it's unique to Buckland County?
Yeah, this part three five four doesn't appear in the, in the school association policies. This is a public county school's policy, um, and, and that's not saying it's a unique policy, because it's not a school association policy.
The last two athletic associations was for China, clearly, and that one was for that policy, but I think, um, I think that's a special policy, plus, that's, that's the city.
And they have a whole, uh, topic dealing with tobacco products, alcohol, and controlled substances, and very persuasive language, but, um, they don't have a, a procedure dealing with this.
I'm just doing some research, there are some, there are some systems in this state that have exclusion of registered, or extra, extra, that I think is, is a good one. I'll share this with you, but, but what they do is, they go and they're done, and they're putting in some, kind of, and then, uh, they're also, they're full back policy.
All right, anything else? All right, we are finished.
So, you want your daughter, Maddie, to go to a single-sex classroom and have estrogen bits?
Maddie, actually, Maddie, I mean, she doesn't care who she, she has no trouble, I just like that to turn off. She has no trouble. She has no trouble showing off her knowledge.